Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the Portsmouth Health Department's first COVID-19 Town Hall. The purpose of the event this evening is to inform our community about what's going on with COVID, what we can do, and how we can get our resources. I'm pleased to announce that we have several subject matter experts with us this evening from the community. We have Ms. Lisa Wright Martin from Bon Secours in Maryview. We have Ms. Barbara Willis from Hampton Roads Community Health Center. We have Dr. Parham Javari from the Virginia Department of Health. We have Dr. Najiba Rayham, who is the Acting Health Director for the City of Portsmouth. Mr. Dwight Richards, who is with the Portsmouth Health Department. And Reverend Dr. Douglas, who is the pastor of Community Presbyterian Church. Thank you all for serving. Now, I did that a little bit backwards. I'm going to let you all introduce yourselves individually, and we'll start with Lisa.
Thank you, Avanti. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Wright Martin, and I serve as the Vice President of Mission for Bon Secours, Maryview, and Harborview. I have a background, a clinical background, as a family nurse practitioner and have served in that role for the health system, as well as for palliative and pain management, oncology, women's health, and community outreach. Pleasure to be here.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you again for this invitation from the Health Department. And my name is Barbara Willis. I'm the Chief Executive Officer, Hampton Roads Community Health Center, located here in Portsmouth, 664 Lincoln Street. Been at this site for 26 years, and we serve all individuals, from newborns to seniors. It's a pleasure to be here.
Good evening. I'm Parham Javari. I'm the Chief Deputy Commissioner for the Virginia Department of Health. I oversee all the local health departments of the state. I had the privilege of being in the Hampton Roads community, serving as the Acting Health Director for North Hope for about five to six weeks, also over in Portsmouth area until we were able to recruit Dr. Aman from Detroit to come serve as your Acting Health Director. It's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you. May I interrupt? Please be sure to speak into your mic when you're speaking. And we'll go to Dr. Rayham.
Good evening. Thank you, Avanti. My name's Najiba Rahman, and I'm the Acting Health Director for Portsmouth Health Department. I'm originally from Michigan, so I served as the Medical Director for the City of Detroit Health Department for a couple of years, and was previously in Duncan County Health Department. And I am a specialist in preventive medicine and public health. Thank you.
Thank you.
And good evening. Thank you for the invite, Ms. Avanti. Certainly is my pleasure to be here, spend a little bit of time with the city. I am a health counselor with the Portsmouth Health Department. I've been here for the past 17 years, working disease and issues, specifically looking at reducing the transmission rate of disease across the city, particularly as it pertains to our young people. Prior to that, I had the pleasure of serving our country, working internationally, mostly in Asia, but also here in the United States as well, working with health issues, educating folks about taking the precautions that are necessary to stop the spread of diseases.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Avanti. I too want to thank you for inviting me here. My name is Wilbur Douglas. I'm currently the pastor of Community Presbyterian Church in the Cavalier Manor section of Portsmouth. Been there for over 10 years. And previously, I was a Navy chaplain and retired after 31 years. And while I was there, I was also chaplain of Navy Medicine, and I served in hospitals in Japan. So I have some background as well in the health area as well with chaplain services. So thank you again for having me here.
Thank you. Now, I'm going to bring up the epidemiologist for the City of Portsmouth, the Portsmouth Health Department, Ms. Michelle Wentz. Michelle is going to give us some information on the statistics with COVID and the community.
Thanks, Avanti. So since March 2020, Portsmouth has had over 13,000 cases. We've seen nearly 1,000 of our residents hospitalized, and we've had 250 deaths due to COVID. This week, we are starting to see our cases increase again. Most likely, this is due to Thanksgiving gatherings, but we are seeing cases in our elementary-age kids and also those aged 20 to 39. We're also seeing more people starting to seek care that have COVID-like symptoms. And this is true across the Hampton Roads region. We are tracking the new variant, Omicron, very closely to see how it might impact our community, but as of today, Virginia has not identified any new cases.
Thank you, Michelle. Now, with that being said, with the Omicron, that's the latest that we've been hearing about the vaccine. Everyone's talking about Omicron. What does that mean, Dr. Javari?
Sure. So we've been through multiple stages of this pandemic, as all of you know. It started just a little over two years ago. We've had different waves, and we've had other variants, including the Delta variant, which we're still dealing with today. So remember, folks, the Omicron variant is not here yet. If you're going to get sick with COVID over the next couple of weeks, it will more than likely be with the Delta variant, which is a very transmissible illness. What does it mean with this new variant? What viruses do generally, when they're brand-new, they make people sick. Obviously, we have a pandemic because nobody has prior immunity to it. But in order to, for them to continue to survive, what usually happens with new viruses is that, over time, they find a way to become more efficiently transmitted to other individuals. They want to multiply and make as many people sick as possible, and they don't want to kill the host, because if the person dies, then they die within the body. So what happens is that the virus generally becomes more transmissible, can infect more people more readily. We saw that with the Delta variant. And generally, it becomes less severe, which was not the case with Delta. Delta actually created more severe cases. The challenge here that we have from a public health perspective is there's some question whether our vaccine efficacy is still going to be as high. So will the vaccine protect individuals as well as it did against the Delta variant or the prior strains? That's something that we're looking at. We're looking at whether testing or the other therapeutics will also potentially not be as effective. So far, the data doesn't seem to indicate that. It does have, there are some questions about vaccine efficacy and whether also individuals that have been previously infected with the other forms of COVID, they may be susceptible to the Omicron variant. So those are the challenges, is that is this new virus going to potentially reinfect those who've been infected before? Is it going to potentially infect those who have had vaccines? But the good news is, the vaccines still are effective. They still provide some form of immunity and still is the mainstay of prevention going forth.
Thank you. Now, Dwight, Mr. Richards, why is it important to get the vaccine? We keep talking about all of the variants, the COVID, but we're pushing the vaccine. Why is it important to get that vaccine?
It's the best way to avoid disease. We are finding that when people are vaccinated, they are more likely to not suffer from the disease. They may have very mild symptoms, if any symptoms at all. And in fact, we do know that while it is possible to have the disease and pass it on, if you are vaccinated, that is less likely to happen. Therefore, vaccination is the best preventive tool that we have, but it does work in concert with social distancing and masking. So therefore, get vaccinated and keep your distance.
Thank you. Now, for our audience, we are on Facebook Live as well. If you have any questions, feel free to type them in, and I can ask our panel. Now, we've been out in the community, most of us are out in the community somehow, some way. Some of the questions that we are hearing is, oh, that vaccine was created too fast. Dr. Rahman, can you speak to that?
Yeah, thank you, Avanti. So the technology for mRNA vaccines has been in existence for about 20 years. It's been utilized for the Ebola vaccine influenza and some cancer vaccines as well. So the way the vaccine works is you've got this tiny little code that produces a protein that's specific to the COVID virus. It's called the spike protein. That's what we see often in some of these mutations. And so when you get the vaccine, either Moderna or Pfizer, which is the mRNA vaccine, or Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a little bit different because it's contained with an adenovirus, which is a common cold virus that does not cause severe disease. You get your shot, and your body recognizes this protein that is foreign to your body, and the cells show up and say, hey, this is, this looks a little weird. And it causes a series of events that produces a protein called antibodies. And so these antibodies are armed to attack the next time they see your body get infected with the virus. So this vaccine is actually telling your body, like, this looks like the virus, but it actually isn't, because it's just a little tiny portion of it. There's no live components of the COVID vaccine enough. So after you get fully vaccinated with Moderna and Pfizer, that's two dose series, or Johnson &amp; Johnson, it's one dose. You're considered fully vaccinated two weeks after those doses. So say you get infected a few months later with COVID. You could get infected. You could fight it off. You're more likely to have less severe disease. And so these antibodies are going to blunt the effect and the severity of that illness.
All right. Thank you. Question for Ms. Willis. With Hampton Roads Community Health Center, are you seeing a lot of pregnant and nursing moms coming in? And if so, are they being vaccinated?
Well, before I answer that, I just want to share in terms of what we've been able to do in the community, and that is that since this pandemic, we have tested 3,500 people for, and we have vaccinated 2,300. And we continue to test and do vaccination. Our testing takes place on Wednesdays for about a couple of hours. It's by appointment only. So in that respect, we're very pleased that we have been able to provide this service to the community. In response to the question about pregnant women, we haven't seen a lot of pregnant women, but we know that it is being encouraged for pregnant women to receive the vaccine. And as a matter of fact, it's encouraged very strongly that they receive the vaccine. It does not harm the, you know, the unborn, as some may suspect.
Thank you. One of the questions is, does the city have a mobile vaccination unit? I'll let Dwight answer that, being that we're with the Health Department, and I can piggyback off of that if you like.
Certainly. Yes, right now, we actually have several different units that are actually partnering with us. There is a mobile unit that is staged in various places, that are working with a lot of our community partners at the moment. So the best way to find where that location would be, would be to reach out to one of our vaccination lines at 393-8585. However, people don't have to necessarily wait for the vaccination unit to come around to their neighborhoods. They're able to get to their vaccines at any of the big-box pharmacies, from a CVS to a Kroger, to a Walmart, to a Sam's Club, the Community Health Center, or at the Health Department. And at the Health Department, we do vaccinate twice per week, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, call that same number, 393-8585, in order to get an appointment. Again, it's one of those where the mobile unit will come for large groups. However, you do have many options, and it doesn't matter where you get your vaccine. The important thing is really getting vaccinated, and the earlier you get it, the earlier you are protected.
Thank you. Actually, the Portsmouth Health Department is actually out at Churchland High School this evening, up until 7:30, vaccinating the 5- to 11-year-olds. We're trying to improve the numbers for the children in Portsmouth with the vaccination. The numbers are low. So we're going to the schools and into the community. So if you live in that Churchland High School area, you don't have to attend, your child doesn't have to attend, any of the elementary schools from 5 to 17, bring them out. Now, we have some good questions coming in. I'm going to get this one in a minute. How effective is the vaccine? And I'm going to ask Dr. Javari that question.
Sure. So as Dr. Aman was talking about it, you know, why do we need that two weeks? It's for the body to be stimulated, produce those antibodies. So it starts working in your body right away, but it really reaches its peak about two weeks thereafter. We heard early on that the mRNA vaccines, the Pfizer and the Johnson, excuse me, the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines were slightly more effective than the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Some people argue, well, you're getting two shots. So that's one part of it. Some is around the technology. So generally, it's very safe. It's very effective. We heard, you know, efficacy of upwards of 90%. So that means if 10 people were to be vaccinated and exposed to the actual virus, maybe only one person would actually develop illness. Some of the later data showed that unfortunately, after about six months, that efficacy goes from the 90 percentiles down to the 70 and even 60. So if those same 10 people were exposed, especially those who are elderly, those who are immunocompromised, or somehow have a weakened immune system, that number goes from nine to six people. So that means that four people may get potentially ill. So bottom line, vaccines will always be a smart choice. It's always going to have some protective effect, whether it's over time or against the variant. But obviously, there's those times, mainly from two weeks to six months, where we think they're really going to work really, really well. And then we just kind of have to continue with the long-term studies to see how often we may potentially need boosters, annual boosters, and so on.
Great. Thank you. Lisa, with Bon Secours, what impact has COVID had on that facility?
Thank you, Avanti, for that question. So first, I'd have to say that we've had some significant policy changes around visitation. That was one of the major impacts to our facility. We had to restrict visitation due to COVID and to do our part in helping to decrease the spread. So visitors coming into our facility is really a helpful part of the healing process for our patients. So having to restrict that certainly was an impact on our organization. In addition, our staff have had to take, you know, additional precautions in order to protect themselves as well as our patients. So in addition to being masked on every day, all day long, which, you know, can present some sort of a hardship for folks who are not used to having to do that, we also have to take those hand-washing precautions, which we've always done, but eye protection is another. And that's a significant piece for us, for individuals who already maybe have some visual challenges, to have that eye protection, too. It's also created a bit of a strain on the healthcare workers. I mean, it's been two years of working very differently in a very different environment with extra precautions, no visitors to, you know, to interact with the patients and really to help in the healing process. So it's taken an emotional and sort of spiritual toll on our providers, as well as the clinicians at the bedside, and our staff.
Thank you. Another question. So are visitors now allowed to see the patients? Do they have to be vaccinated? Or what do the...
So we don't have... Great question. So we have been able to lift some of those visitor restrictions and still keep some of those policies in place. So individuals who are coming in for outpatient services are allowed to have one visitor or one companion with them for that in the waiting room area. But we've had to restrict even our clergy personnel from external, from coming in. And so Dr. Reverend Dr. Douglas will talk a little bit about that, which is also a challenge, because our patients need that spiritual care. So we do have chaplaincy at our facility, but having your own pastor or clergy leader being able to come in, it can be significant in terms of the healing process. So visitors are allowed. They do not have to show proof of vaccination. However, it's strongly encouraged. And we have had those opportunities, even on our site, for visitors to get vaccinated when we had that, those clinics open onsite at the facility. But they do have to wear a mask, and then we do have the time constraint in terms of how long they can stay in with the patient. Of course, there are circumstantial surrounding some of our individual patients. On a case-by-case basis, if they need to have an individual, a family member, or a significant other at the bedside for their own safety, then certainly, we are allowing that. But there have, we continue to have those restrictions. And certainly, for those individuals who have been diagnosed with COVID, we are not allowing individuals to come in for visitation unless it's at end-of-life.
Thank you. Dr. Douglas?
Yes, ma'am.
I know that's hard for you. When, and I've, working in Portsmouth, the faith-based community is very strong. So how has that affected you when you've had members who were in the hospital or needed some type of care? How did that affect your congregation?
It affects them greatly, because in many cases, the family can't even be there with them, or at least in the past, when, at the beginning of this pandemic, they weren't allowed to have family members there. And the best you could do was call, maybe talk on the phone. And that's, that's, that's hard on us, because, and for other denominations, where there's a sacramental ministry that's involved, there is no anointing or any of that that can take place, which, for some people, that's paramount for them and their beliefs. So we've had to do the best that we can as far as just trying to stay in touch, like we said, with the new media, social media, if that's permitted, to do it that way. Face timing, if you can, but it just doesn't take the place of that personal touch when you're able to go in there and talk to people. Made it especially hard, as they said, and I've had this for end-of-life. I wasn't even permitted to be there for that, you know, and that makes it very, very difficult. Can't go into the homes. We have some of our elderly members who have not been back to church, even though we opened up in July for us. They haven't been back because of their fears. And some have even put signs on their houses, you know, no visitors. So we have to, we have to respect that.
It's very hard. It is very hard. Whoosh, that one sort of touched me. I have a question. What would the Portsmouth Health Department like citizens of Portsmouth to do to assist in the efforts to combat COVID? Are you opening, open to partnering with small businesses and community groups?
Absolutely. So some of the work that we're doing right now is where, you know, we started these school-based clinics. We started that today. That's going to happen over the next six weeks. We're also working very closely with our congregate care facilities, like our nursing homes and adult foster care, making sure that people are vaccinated, but then also getting their boosters. But, you know, for the community is really to encourage others to get vaccinated and to, you know, take that multi-layered approach, especially with Omicron here, with wearing the mask, doing social distancing, and really keeping each other safe. But we are very open to partnering with anybody within the state, because we want to strengthen our collaboration. And so if there are any businesses that, you know, want to look into vaccine clinics or testing, or even just have our team come out for any sort of education or outreach, please do reach out to us, because we're very open to it, and we'd be very excited.
And I'm going to answer, tag along with that one. As a population health manager for the Portsmouth Health Department, absolutely and yes. My number, if there are any organizations, I receive calls from faith-based organizations, any small businesses, my number is 757-393-8585, extension 8566. You have my direct line. So we are all here together. We are here to partner. We partner with Bon Secours. We partner with Hampton Roads Community Health Center. We partner with the faith-based organizations. We partner with the state. That is why we are here. We have a purpose and a mission, and that is to serve the community. Now, next question. We have people who are waiting. I'm going to wait to see what happens. Some of them are basing it off of past experiences. I've had the vaccine now, two doses and a booster, haven't grown a third head. But what would you tell those people who want to wait? And I can take that from anyone.
I would start, I'm sorry. I would start off by saying, don't wait. Keep in mind that if you have not been vaccinated, it takes approximately two weeks for you to develop enough antibodies to have some protection. And that full protection does not occur until after you've had the second dose, if it's one of the MRNAs. Now, if you've decided to go with the Johnson &amp; Johnson, which is a single dose, you still need approximately two weeks from that in order to develop enough antibodies. However, in the meantime, while you are waiting, if you were exposed to someone that has the disease, you could go on to develop the disease. You could actually get very sick from it. So you can avoid all of that by simply getting vaccinated. The earlier, the better, because that's the sooner that you'll develop the antibodies that's going to give you the protection that you need.
Thank you.
One of the things that I hear is that, well, I'm a very healthy person. I never get sick. So therefore, I don't see why I need to take, you know, to have this vaccination. And my response to that, not being a clinical person, is, but you may be a carrier. And so you're going to visit grandma, you're fine, but grandma has a weak immune system. And so as a result of that, you could be exposing her, and you don't even know that until it's too late. So that's, and the next thing I would say to them is, talk to knowledgeable people. I think that all of a sudden, everyone has become the clinical expert. I've never seen, heard so many individuals who now know more than any of the scientists, any of the doctors, that are in that profession or in primary care profession. All of a sudden, everyone is an expert. Radiologists can now talk, speak about, you know, epidemiology, the different things like that. So my point, my point is, you've listened to experts before, why change now?
And that is why, exactly why the panel that we have was selected, because you all are experts in each one of the areas, and we appreciate that. Look at all the talent that's in Portsmouth. Go Portsmouth.
Avanti, if I could add to that as well, when folks are saying they want to wait and they want to see, vaccine has been available for a year now. So I'm not sure how much longer you're desiring to wait, or what it is you're looking for. But the vaccine has been available, and individuals have been getting vaccinated for a year now.
And I'll pick up on that point. So, so, you know, let's look at that spectrum, right? It's been available for adults for, again, close to a year. Actually, we're about a week away from its anniversary, right? So do we have long-term studies? No, but, you know, I'd like the long-term studies on drinking soda, on smoking, on alcohol. I mean, how many things do people do, honestly, or don't do, like exercise, and I'm probably one of those on the latter group, that we know would be better if you avoided to improve your health, or that you participated to improve your health? So, you know, it's a little bit difficult at times when there are individuals who say, absolutely not, but if, you know, in the individual doctor's office, where you're having more of those private conversations, which I think is really the way to kind of convince individuals with questions, is to put the element of risk out there on the table. All right? And we should probably get back to masks. You want to talk about that? You see some of us wearing masks, some others. I presented, I'm vaccinated. Some of the folks around me did as well. We're six feet apart. I want people to see me, but in a public setting, if I was in a very crowded restaurant, I'd probably wear my mask, right? So we all have different levels of comfort we are, you know, with how much risk we're willing to take. But for the adults, for the elderly, this vaccine has been out. It has been not only administered here in Portsmouth, in Virginia, in the U.S., but all around the globe, with hundreds of millions of individuals now receiving it. So that's point number one. Point number two, we keep repeating the statistics of who's getting sick. Overwhelmingly, the individuals who are now getting sick are those who are unvaccinated. And even more so than that, individuals who wind up in the hospital are dying are mostly just about the unvaccinated. So how much more proof do we want? I would understand if somebody says, if they're a parent of a younger child, for 5 to 17, may argue, well, my child is healthy. He or she doesn't have any, you know, immediate concerns. Maybe they want to wait another month or so to get more real-time data, even though we've been vaccinating for several weeks. I may understand that, right? We need more time to reassure some of those folks. But we also have to have some faith in the individuals who've done these studies, the FDA, the hard looks that have been done in all of these vaccines. And the last little point, in terms of more reassurance, is when things did come up, some of you may remember last spring, with some of the vaccines, there were concerns around myocarditis or pericarditis, which is the inflammation of the lining around the heart or the heart muscle. It was occurring at a couple cases per million. It's very, very, very infrequent, but it happened enough across the U.S., some cases on the East Coast, Midwest, West Coast, and the CDC is looking at this at the national level and saying, you know what? This is concerning. That actually brought more confidence in me, because I said, this isn't something that happens frequently. A single doctor may not pick it up. They just have the one case. But at a national level, they were able to look at it. They actually paused the administration of that vaccine, looked at the data, and then came back and said, you know what? The benefits outweigh the risks. So it's not that we blindly, from the scientific community, are telling people to go ahead and get vaccinated. It's been studied. It's being continued to be looked at. Any provider that provides the vaccine has to write and report the side effects to a national level. So this effort's going to continue on. So, you know, but I do want to say that certain people may say, you know, some of the newer vaccines, or if there's a brand-new vaccine that'll come out for even younger than five, I may not be the first person in line. But after a few weeks, a few months, I do hope that people come around to feeling more comfortable.
Thank you. Thank you all for those answers. I'm going to take one from the audience. Does the Health Department have a program in place, or other facilities, for citizens who are unable to stand in line or even walk due to issues with COPD or other health issues?
Yes, absolutely. So we do have a homebound vaccination program. And so we just want... And so we just want you to call seven five seven three nine three eight five eight five. And then the extension is eight seven one six for our vaccine team. And they will schedule and our Health Department team will come out and provide vaccination. And then, you know, if you, if you're doing Moderna or Pfizer, we will come back for the second dose and booster.
Thank you, yes. When we go out to do the homebound visits, we partner with the city EMS. So we have partnerships with this vaccine in this whole process. This has been going on almost two years now. So thank you for all of our community partners that assist with this. There are always events going on. I remember when we first started testing Bon Secours, we're out in the heat. But we got it done. So, and then there were events at Hampton Roads Community Health, Community Health Center. You were one of the first organizations to offer after-hours clinics, so thank you. We have to think outside of the box because not everyone works from nine to five. So we all try to accommodate our residents where they are to ensure that they have that opportunity. That's where the other locations, the CVC, excuse me, CVS, Walgreens, Rite Aid, Kroger's, they all come in.
And Avanti, I think you partnered with a faith-based community as well over the weekend at some of their events as well. And I think not just in Portsmouth, but, but across the Norfolk Hampton Roads. It's been a critical partnership because, again, we talked about the trusted partners. Sometimes people don't want to hear from government officials, and I try not to take that personally. I get it, you know, you want to hear from the person who you have had that relationship with. And we just want to acknowledge all of the individuals in the community that are our extension and our voice. And as long as our citizens are, are getting the service they need, we're more than happy to have others host those events. And I think it goes a really long way, so my thanks to all our faith-based partners.
Yes, there are so many partners that we've had for the last two years that have supported us. I'm not going to start naming names because I will forget. But the Hampton, two healthcare facilities, yes. But faith-based organizations, community organizations, there are so many, and we're so grateful. I'm going to take another call, um, call, excuse me, question from our audience. Do you have to live in Portsmouth to receive the vaccination or COVID test in Portsmouth?
The actual answer to that is no. As long as you are living and you go to any of the facilities, you will be vaccinated. It is not limited to Portsmouth residents. So whatever is convenient for you, please get vaccinated. That is probably the more important thing as opposed to where you live.
And that is also true when those clinics are hosted by Bon Secours, whether they're at our Craddock Community Health Hub and even at the hospital we opened up for families and visitors to come in, families of our associates to come in and get vaccinated and did not have to be a Portsmouth resident. If you wanted to be vaccinated, we made it available to you and will continue to do that. Thank you.
The same thing for Hampton Roads Community Health Center. We serve individuals all over the Southampton Roads area. And so, yes, the only thing we ask is to schedule an appointment, seven five seven three nine three six three six three.
Awesome, thank you.
Avanti, if I could add, just, you know, along with that, take it one level further. When we opened up the Military Circle Mall as a regional site, we had a lot of individuals coming from out of state, visiting the area and on the way to the beach. So if we have individuals from Virginia, West Virginia, Maryland, anywhere else, you're absolutely welcome to get vaccinated. Because if you work and play and live in our neighborhood, A, your potential risk of getting infected and spreading it to all of those here. So that's been pretty much the common theme, I think, across the U.S. that vaccinations are allowed, are encouraged. And that includes also international visitors. Some people may not have necessarily the records to, to share with us. So we do encourage further conversation. But I think it's safe to say that if someone's interested in getting the vaccine and they haven't had it before, they're looking to get a dose, you know, after waiting three, three weeks for the first dose of the Pfizer or four weeks, as long as the, the scientific, the medical requirements eligibility is met, right? As long as the vaccine's approved for that age group, we're going to go ahead and provide that vaccine. So anyone that is in the area that's listening tonight, we encourage you to come out to any of the sites here and certainly any of the Health Department sites as well to get vaccinated.
Thank you. Another question from our audience. This person needs to have their card corrected. The incorrect date is written. Do you all handle any of that?
Yes, we can, I'm getting a nod, yes, we can handle that. We do participate with the registration and therefore we do also do the, you know, we're able to do the cards. So they will be able to look on the registration in the system and get the information.
And you can also call the Portsmouth Health Department at seven nine seven, seven five seven three nine three eight five eight five. And we can assist with that as well. Now, we talked about the hospitalizations, the number of people who are dying. What about our survivors? We're hearing about some of the long-term effects. Have any of you had to deal with any of that? As far as, they call them long haul symptoms?
No, I'll just share a little bit of, of what I know. I think some of the, the concerns and the challenges is impacts on the neurological system, impacts on chronic diseases. And, and what we're unfortunately seeing is that there is a higher mortality rate in the year after individuals who've had severe COVID. Now, whether that's because of the biological changes, it's whether because they don't fully recover. Those who have very, very severe cases and are hospitalized have a slightly higher mortality rate than the following year. This was a study that was just published in, in the last couple of weeks. So with regards to the long haul, I think that is something that's going to require more research because long haul, you know, certainly 12 months may not be enough. Again, there are some concerning signs, even impacting mental health. Behavioral health disorders becoming exacerbated after long COVID. So you can imagine if someone's in the ICU for an extended period of time, it's a biological impact, but also a psychological impact. So unfortunately, I think time will bring us more information about the very, you know, complex aspects of this illness, which takes me back to really our, our hope of preventing it in the first place by vaccinations and hopefully through other social mitigation efforts.
Great, thank you. Dr. Reverend Douglas, question in regards to the instance where you were able to convince someone to get the vaccine. Can you tell us that story?
Well, I try not to convince people. I try to listen first to find out what's keeping you from getting it. I'd rather, when they, when they share with me that they're not sure about it, rather than telling them, well, you need to get it, you got to get it. What is keeping you from getting it? What fears do you have? What's, what's going on? And you'd be surprised, well, I had a cousin who had a bad reaction and he never recovered. Or I remember years ago when somebody had a rabies shot or whatever, or smallpox or polio. So it's maybe a history there. So it's really just trying to just kind of walk with them. I had, I know some folk that I've talked with and they were very, very hesitant about getting it. And so I asked them again, share me your fears. And they talked about it. And then we just started talking facts, you know, as, as we just heard up here tonight, you know? Well, this is what I know. And where are you getting your information? You know, well, this Facebook group said, or, you know, a bunch of my friends at the gym said, or... No, I said, have you talked with anybody like your, your family doctor, your family physician? Or have you read any of the reports that come out of the medical committee, the studies? And I'm not talking just any medic, I'm talking about the people who deal with this infectious diseases, making sure you're talking to the right people or getting the right information. So over time, I, they would just say, by the way, I scheduled my vaccine for next month or, or for next week or whatever. And, and then after that, they were just glad that they did. But again, it was not trying to make them feel guilty or telling, well, you should have done this before. The other, the other approach is, what we've already heard too, is that you know this isn't just for you. You, you have an elderly person at your house or you work with others. But the other thing is, you're coming into our church and we have an older congregation here. That's another issue. So you may feel fine, but you may not, you may be asymptomatic and not show any signs and you're being a carrier. And so that's the other thing that they hear as well. So it's not just, you know, it is personal, but it's also the fact that this is a community that you're, you're part of that you could also be detrimental to. So, yeah, when, when, when they come back and they tell you, yeah, I'm going to get my shot. This happened several times and it made me feel really good.
Thank you. And I remember when we were testing at Community Presbyterian. And there were some folks, and you had the power of persuasion, and they said, okay, pastor. I was like, wow.
Well, you know, it's, it's something I've had to change even at the benediction at the, at the end of the service now. Before I give the benediction, it's, now that we're in a hybrid type of situation, we have people in the sanctuary, but we also have people several states away who are now watching us every Sunday. And I will tell them, you know, folks, stay healthy. If you haven't gotten it yet, go ahead and get it. If you have questions, talk to the right people. It's just a constant reminder. And, and just as we know, some people are going to go ahead and do that and we'll never know. But we have to keep telling them that. Just, and let them know, we're here to support you. If you have an issue, you need to talk about it, let's talk.
Thank you. Dwight, I know this is, this is your passion. So tell us your, what do you tell people who are hesitant?
I mean, actually, I'm going to start off by talking about myself. At the start of this, when it was published that there's a vaccine that's being worked on, I was probably among those individuals that says, there is absolutely no way that I'm going to be at the front of the line to get that vaccine and I can reflect on all the different reasons why I shouldn't. Until I did like Pastor said, which is to stop, read the facts, get the facts, and see what is actually going on. What is the vaccine about? From the data that came out initially, when I started seeing what was being done and actually looking back at some of the historical data that existed that predated COVID-19, I start realizing that we didn't just start working on this vaccine within the past two years. That groundwork has actually been laid for some time. It made me feel a lot better. And therefore, when it became time for me to be vaccinated, it was a very easy thing for me to do was to actually not take a risk, but be informed and to make that decision in order to be vaccinated. Now, in working with the community, I have come across many people who are like to, who are able to remind me of studies that had been done and that they didn't feel comfortable because they feel that this was just being a study. And I've actually had to share with them that every time you've gone to the doctor and every time you've taken an over-the-counter medication, information is being collected that is being studied in order to make changes, which has resulted in us having one of the safest healthcare systems on the globe. So therefore, when you're taking this vaccine, you're not being a guinea pig, you're not actually being a test subject, you're actually participating in the process that's going to contain diseases so that you and others that you may care about and those that care about you are not going to suffer. So once they're able to put that into the right perspective, then they're able to make the, what I believe is the natural choice, which is to be vaccinated.
Thank you. And I've heard you over and over again, so it's great. Thank you. Another question from the audience. Are blood clots a side effect of the vaccine? And can you please list side effects, all the possible side effects to the vaccine? Dr. Ramon and Dr. Jaberry? And I'll let Lisa Wright Martin as well.
Yes, I can start with, at least when the Johnson and Johnson vaccine rolled out, you know, there was an association with blood clots that were found within the brain. And then there were some that were found in the legs as well. And then looking at that data over time, you know, it's that risk versus benefit. And so the benefit of getting the vaccine was more effective than getting, than not getting it and having infection. And you actually can, you know, develop blood clots from the COVID infection as well. So that is some of the side effects. And then you've got the common ones, as Dr. Jaberry was talking about. You know, there's that reporting system called VAERS through the CDC where you are to report any side effects. And so the common arm pain after injection, muscle aches, fatigue, you can get fevers, shakes, chills, you can get headaches. I myself had many of those symptoms. And, you know, it came down to drinking a lot of Gatorade and, you know, being over, you know, getting over those symptoms at the end of, at the end of the day.
Yeah, and I want to make a couple distinctions. You're exactly right. So, and I was just Googling VAERS, we use it all the time. So the Vaccine Adverse Event Reporting System, that was that electronic system where I mentioned a little earlier. It is collecting data from everybody that gets a vaccine if they have a side effect. So the reporter, the, the report is done by the healthcare provider. So we can study, because, you know, is it a, is it a bad batch? Is it a number of people that went to a specific doctor? Was it a specific thing that came out of production that was just, you know, not right? So just like a lot of our other things that we do sometimes with food, we track all of the lots so we can be very specific about, was it just this one individual? Was it the individual and the provider? Was it the batch? Or what was the case? So the, the blood clots, so some of those things, and they can lead to problems with the heart, problems that resemble a stroke, they did occur. And again, that was what, what paused the study. So it occurs at a very, very, very small frequency, where we're talking about a couple per, per million. And in a lot of those cases, those symptoms actually result, some with treatments, some with hospitalization. And that's where we come back and say, okay, would we rather have, you know, 999,000 some individuals be vaccinated and protected and not spread the illness to how many, you know, others in their community versus having that, those one, two, or, or three individuals within that community potentially having those more serious impacts? So what I'm also hearing, and this has been really a, a talk of the town again with boosters, right? So we talked about the vaccine efficacy comes down, we got to get the boosters, is that people are experiencing that more severe arm pain. So the, the side effects that we talk about within, you know, six to 48 hours, the fever, the chill, the fatigue. You know, the members in my family, within a day of getting it, felt like a mat truck hit them. It's not fun, I'll be honest. The, the first day for some individuals, especially those of a very strong immune system, is hard. But then as soon as, just as the symptoms come, they also go away. So those kinds of side effects are generally taken care of by over-the-counter medication, pills that help against with muscle aches, fevers, like Tylenol, things like that. So there's the side effects that we all get from normal vaccinations. And with COVID, it's definitely a little bit, a little bit more severe than, let's say, our flu shots or our tetanus shots. And then those other complications like the blood clots, which do happen, but again, are extremely, extremely rare.
And I just wanted to add to that as well as, you know, with the, you know, myocarditis cases and with the blood clots. One of the greatest lessons we learned is that the clinical community knew right away how to respond to it and how to identify it in the hospital. And so, you know, addressing that right away, you know, prevented any, any sort of like further complications.
Thank you. We have another question from the audience. COVID-19 has created and brought to light a high level of mental distress. What advice would you give to citizens who find themselves dealing with higher levels of mental depression such as, mental distress such as depression, anxiety, fear, et cetera?
I, I am willing to take that because this is one of the things that we have found in the healthcare environment, in the provider care environment, acute care setting is happening. You mentioned, you asked the question earlier about how it's impacted our facility. So we have seen that, not just amongst the patients that are coming through our emergency department and being admitted or even in our primary care offices, but also amongst our staff. And so we're doing lots of things to help to mitigate and to help to resolve those symptoms and, and those issues that folks are dealing with, with mental distress, moral distress, moral injury, burnout. We were talking earlier with, with colleague regarding that. Seek help as you would for any other condition. If you found something on your skin and you thought this could be cancerous, if you had difficulty breathing, I mean, you would seek help. So the first thing we would say is to seek help. Get professional help and don't be afraid to do that. Everyone has been stressed out, there's no other way to say that. This pandemic has brought that about. So for individuals who may have had some underlying mental health conditions or maybe just the environmental stressors, this impacted them even more so. And so we're starting to see that, not just again, for the patients that are coming through our doors, but for our, our providers, our clinicians, our healthcare workers who've been dealing with this pandemic on a regular basis, you know, with the patients that we're caring for and they're people too. So they're also dealing with their children at home trying to do virtual learning and how do I manage all of that while I still have to go to work and take care of patients and that sort of thing? So the first thing we, I would say is to seek help, professional help. And then think about those things that you've done in the past that may have helped you to get through a tumultuous, you know, a sad situation. Whatever your, your coping mechanisms might be, positive ones, we hope. So, you know, if that means an app on your phone... So, you know, if that means an app on your phone, opportunities to just deep breathe into woo-sah, the doctor mentioned earlier, exercise, those kinds of things that help you to decrease the stressors, just taking me time, me moments, and being with yourself or being with others. Lots of isolation happened during the pandemic as well, so now's the opportunity too, to really reach out, whether that's social media, virtual sort of things, FaceTiming. We did a lot of that, even with our patients, for their families that couldn't come in to a visitation, we have the virtual visitation. So maybe you need to do that, reach out to friends and to family, to a trusted person that you can share and confide in with the issues that may be going on. But there's lots of, you know, there's lots of things that people can do, like I mentioned, apps and all kinds of, you know, external things, but really start to take that time for yourself. Meditation, taking a walk, you know, maybe going out to the beach, or, you know, whatever that might be, sitting by the lake, walking your dog, talking with your neighbors, making new friends, but having an opportunity to sort of reach out and get outside of yourself.
Thank you. And I can actually speak to that. Every Friday, I would get a sore throat at three o'clock, and I was like, oh dear Lord, I don't want to have COVID. And I was like, okay. One of the things that I did, I pulled out the crayons and the coloring book. It's amazing. My father's 85 years old, and he's very active, always going somewhere, and I was saying, Dad, you can't do that right now. And he was okay with it. So to appease him, we started an herb garden. I decided that I was going to start a garden. Don't depend on me to feed you. Nothing grew. But it was amazing how relaxing it was, because he would call, did you check on the garden? Did you check on this? I was like, okay. So I founded, other people were doing that as well, and I found Facebook pages with folks that were gardening, support groups, so reach out, there is help. And this actually came up at the Portsmouth Health Department yesterday on our call, our manager's call. There is a list that we have of facilities for mental health, and we're going to repost that again. You know, if you give us a call, 757-393-8585, extension 8566, I can make sure you get a copy. It lists resources for mental health, it lists resources for abuse, we know a lot of that was going on, any type of resources that you can think of that you may need, we have numbers for that. There are partners in the community that are ready, willing, and able, even right behind our office is the Portsmouth Volunteers for the Homeless. That was one of the communities that was sort of left off the radar. We were able to go over and give vaccine to that particular community. So we're working with our partners, because we know that there are circumstances where there's that exception to the rule. So whatever we can do to assist, please let us know. The good thing about the health department, we're in the same building with the Portsmouth Social Services, and soon to be Hampton Roads Community Health Center is going to be one block away. So we partner together to do what we can do.
May I add to that, the importance of the primary care doctor. During this pandemic, people started to pull away from going to see their primary care doctor, and particularly those with chronic conditions. And so in this, in this particular time as well, it's also still very important to remember to reach out to your primary care doctor, making sure that you are maintaining yourself as it pertains to the medications that have been prescribed to you. And also with the Hampton Roads Community Health Center, we now have licensed clinical social workers who are very engaged, as well as a psychiatric nurse practitioner. So we are, you know, wanting to be proactive in terms of having the resources available so that when individuals come in to see their primary care doctor, they can be directed to seek additional help through, you know, through the behavioral health component as well. And I agree in terms of what you're talking about, in terms of, you know, our, the employees in the healthcare community, and all those individuals who are on the front line, this, it gets to the point where this is a bit much. And to, how do you maintain yourself during this critical, this critical time? You know, we wanted, we were talking, it was like, folks just saying, I just wanted to be over with, that's all. Just maybe if I, you know, close my eyes and, you know, wiggle your nose and blink your head like genie, well, I'll wake up and everything will be fine. Well, it's not going to happen just that way. So you do have to, one, recognize that you are not alone. Next, it is okay to ask for help. And I think that when individuals feel that they can reach out and just be able to be vulnerable, then that will also help them in the long run.
Avanti, I want to kind of piggyback on both what you both said. As far as the faith-based communities, that really has an impact on people's mental health. We found that people who are involved with some sort of faith community, regardless of what the denomination is, they have that opportunity for having people check on them, they learn ways to meditate, they find different things they can do to help with that, and they aren't as alone as if they are just without anybody. And we have single people in our congregation, as all churches do, and you find that people will check on you. And in the smaller communities, it's even better, because you miss a Sunday or a Saturday, Sabbath, whatever, folk know, where were you? What happened? You okay? That's not something you get if you're not involved with something, a social group or whatever, but I know especially with the faith-based communities, that's very helpful if people could be involved in something. And I think that's why we had such a push when we, everybody had to close down. You heard across the country, some of these churches were willing to break the law to have services, even though they were putting people at risk, but they want to make sure they still have that connection. And that's why we went to all efforts to just have Facebook Live. I had to do a training session with my people, they never even knew how to turn on a computer, but now they know how to do Zoom, they know how to do Facebook, anything, so that they can stay connected. And they were so afraid of not being part of it, that they got grandchildren and nieces and nephew, come show me how to turn this on and do this. So I think it's very important if people respond to their, to their communities, and we also keep in touch with all our communities. I remember years ago, I went to the manager clinic, and that was one of the statistics I'll never forget, when they were, it was a suicide prevention course, and that was the one statistic where it stood out, that those who were involved with some sort of religious community, their numbers were much lower than those who were not involved, and that they were, they felt more secure, more safe, and they had resources to help them in times of trouble. So just want to put that out there again.
Well, thank you. We are almost at the top of the hour. I want to thank our panelists. If there are questions that are on Facebook, if we did not get a chance to answer them, we will answer and send them to you. But again, I want to thank everyone for participating, I want to thank the city for allowing us to have this event, I want to thank Bon Secours, Hampton Road, Bon Secours and Maryview, Hampton Roads Community Health Center, Dr. Jaberry, who made his way from Richmond to be with us this evening, our new acting health director, Dwight, who is a fixture with the Portsmouth Health Department, and Dr. Douglas with Community Presbyterian, who does so much in the Cavalier Manor area and in the city of Portsmouth. So again, thank you all, be safe. What's the final word?
Get vaccinated.
Get vaccinated.
Thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Avanti.
Thank you.